Good morning, everyone. We'll call the December 1st, 2015 meeting of the Jackson City Council to order. And we'll call on Councilman David Sisko to lead us in our invocation and pledge. If you would, please rise.
Could you pray with me, please? As you're hearing, Father, we thank you for this day and the many blessings that you give us, dear Father, especially the blessing of life, Father. Father, we first have some troubles in our world, and we ask that you help with this. We have a problem with not having you in people's hearts, Father. And, Lord, we just ask you to take care of these terrorists and bring them to reality that life is precious, dear Lord. And, Lord, we ask you also to be with this country where we have a lot of violence, Father. Just come into these people's hearts and let them feel like life is, again, precious. Just be with this, and so we can have peace that reigns forever, Lord. Lord, we thank you for this city and what it means to each one of us, and we thank you for the employees of this city and the work that they do to make everything right, Father. And we just ask your continued blessings upon them. Lord, we ask you to be with this council this morning and to help us to make decisions that are right for the people of the city of Jackson. Just give us the wisdom to do so. Lord, we love you in Christ, and thank you both for your love and Christ's sacrifice, and give us the opportunity of everlasting life with you. These things we ask in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may show that Councilman Flipp and Councilman Rahm is absent today. Councilman McColl, he had other commitments which he could not get out of. And then, Council, if we have no objections, under the recognitions, if we could move the presentation of the Jackson Arts Council down to next to last, we have some young people here who are totally responsible for getting them back into school, and so we're going to put them up front. Item four is approval of minutes of November 3rd, 2015 city council meeting. Council members have a copy of those minutes, and if there are no additions, any changes in them, we'll go ahead and accept those minutes as submitted to you all. Item five is invitation for public comment, and if there's anyone here who would like to be heard under any item, under new business, if you would let me know that at that time, I'll be happy to call on you and ask you to come up. Proclamations, let me come down for those, and we have several recognitions this morning. Ms. Sweetlove, if you'd come up, we have a proclamation for you. Lord, are you here? Anyone here to accept proclamation? Okay, yeah.
Okay, we have a proclamation this morning. It's World AIDS Day, and I will make a proclamation and make an important record. We'll ask President Harold Carter to address the council and our audience. It's a proclamation, whereas December the 1st of each year has been designated as World AIDS Day, a day to encourage public support and programming to prevent the spread of HIV infection, about awareness, education, about HIV/AIDS, and demonstrate compassion for those infected or affected by HIV. And whereas the spread of HIV requires a worldwide and community-wide effort to increase open communication, education, and preventive action to stop the spread of HIV/AIDS, and whereas it's estimated that over 35 million people worldwide are currently living with HIV/AIDS, and estimated 1.2 million Americans are living with HIV. And whereas there are 852 persons in West Tennessee who are currently living with HIV/AIDS, the number of persons living with HIV/AIDS in West Tennessee has increased by 15% since 2010, in cases that have been reported in every county. And whereas World AIDS Day 2015 provides an opportunity for all of us, individuals, communities, political leaders, to take action in regard to HIV infection and AIDS with the theme "Getting to Zero." And whereas West Tennessee Regional Consortium and Community Planning Group, Lane College Wellness Program, the Jackson-Madison County Health Department, the Tennessee State Conference, and Jackson-Madison County Branch of NAACP, joined together with the Ecumenical Community and others of goodwill in commemoration of World AIDS Day 2015. Now, therefore, we, Jerry Gist, Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim Monday, December the 1st, 2015, as World AIDS Day, and the City of Jackson-Madison County, and urge all individuals to unite in the effort to educate the public, raise awareness, and commit to a healthy, responsible lifestyle in order to curb the threat of this life-threatening infection in the home, community, and the nation overall. President Carter, it's an honor for me to present these to you, and thank you all for what you do.
Could I have those that are in attendance here to come up with me as we make these final comments, those in NAACP? One of the things that we know in this community, that getting to zero is critical in our community because we infect more disproportionately in rural West Tennessee area. Getting to zero means that we want all those individuals to get tested. We want individuals in this community, particularly in our younger community, to make sure that you know your status. This is serious because one of the things that we know, that all the indicators of HIV infection are going down in a lot of communities around the world, and indeed in this country. But unfortunately, among certain populations, particularly in rural West Tennessee, that we do have an issue still. Everyone has to be on guard. This is a matter of life and death to all of us, and all of us here who represent different areas, and I thought I turned off my phone, who represent different areas of our West Tennessee area, need to know and understand that the job is not over. Even though there's more wonderful drugs out there to help this disease, to eradicate it, we still have a lot of problems with people not knowing about this disease, and that's unfortunate. I want to thank the mayor and the Jackson City Council for their support in this and all the other partners that we have today here represented as we continue to fight this disease. Mayor, thank you very much.
Thank you all for the awareness program, for this particular issue. Appreciate you all's involvement in it, in our local community. We have Mr. Hickerson here this morning of the Jackson-Madison Chapter, Tennessee Society of the Sons of the American Revolution, to come up for a special presentation, I think, to council. Bill, John McCutcheon is also with, welcome.
On behalf of the James Madison Chapter of the Tennessee Society of the Sons of the American Revolution, John McCutcheon, who is a past society president, I would like to present to Mayor Gist and to the City of Jackson this certificate, in recognition of the proper and respectful display of the American flag at Liberty Gardens Park. So we're very appreciative of the city for what you do.
Tony Black is here, who is director of Parks and Recreation, had direct oversight of that particular park in our city, extremely proud of it. We're getting closer to our memorial of being constructed there, and once it is completed, it will be an absolutely spectacular setting for, to remember our veterans and a great addition to that particular park. And Bill, thank you very much for this. In a very visible place. We have the U-14 Boys Team of the Jackson Football Club here with us this morning. These are the ones that we need to get up here to recognize and let's get them back in the classroom. The team name is the Jackson Football Club, '02 Wolves. Sorry, guys. This team was crowned the U-14 Division II State Champions on November 15th in Murfreesboro. Their division included 17 teams from all over the state. They will represent Jackson and entire state of Tennessee in June 2016 at the President's Cup Regional Tournament in College Station, Texas. Amy Jones, you want to come up here and let's get these youngsters up here, recognize them, and introduce them to everyone. And parents, y'all come up here with them. Y'all drove them back and forth to practice and matches, so y'all come on up there. Amy, I'll let you introduce them. Y'all, why don't you come right over here and line up in front of the guys? While they're coming up, let me just commend these young guys for being great ambassadors for a city. Anytime we have competition statewide, regional competitions, national competition, their conduct, not only their abilities on the field, but also their conduct reflects greatly on our city, so we appreciate y'all being great ambassadors for a city. Ms. Amy?
Good morning. Thank you all so much for recognizing these boys this morning. They have worked very hard to be here. I'm the board chair for the Jackson Football Club, and I'm also, I'm going to embarrass them, I'm a proud mom of number nine up here, so. He said no. I'm so proud of them. Understand that what they've accomplished means they beat out teams from everywhere in Tennessee. That's much larger areas where they have many more kids to draw from, Jackson, Memphis, Nashville, Knoxville, Chattanooga. What these boys have accomplished, coming from a city the size of Jackson compared to that, is nothing small. And a lot of them have been working towards this since they were eight years old or younger. I want to, I don't know if the council knows how big a part you have played in this, because the money that you put into facilities like North Park and Kate Campbell enables these boys to have a place to practice and lets them accomplish what they have accomplished. And I'm going to embarrass Tony Black, too, because y'all have the finest people in the world working for the City Parks and Rec Department. You really do. I love, yes. I love Tony and Jim Jacobs and Skip Jones out there. They've just been fantastic to work with the last couple of years, and thank you so much for everything that you have done. I'm actually going to ask our coach, Malong Jargu, who's with Bethel University, I'm going to ask him if he would come up and recognize the boys by name.
Thank you, everyone, for having us here, the City of Jackson, the mayor, and everyone. I would like to describe this team in one word, character. These boys have shown character all year, all their time playing soccer. They really deserve to win this. I really want to thank the boys, the parents, and City of Jackson for giving them an opportunity, and giving me, myself, an opportunity to work with these decent kids here. From there, Sam Newman, Will Puchek, Luke Netherlin, Colin Jones, Ben Downing, John Drook, Esophay Feller, Jonathan, Jack Moore, Cody, Leo, Hayden, Will Bartel, Christian, Anthony, and Connor Woods.
Thank you, Coach. Thank you, guys. We're very proud of you all. We appreciate you representing our city the way you have. Thank you, parents, for playing taxi driver for the last several years and getting them to and from practice and to your matches. And we want to wish you the very best next year at College Station, Texas. Congratulations, guys. School time, guys.
I want to echo what Amy Jones has said about the City of Jackson and the lengths that they go through to make sure that these kids are not playing Xbox or own video games. They're growing up in a different world that we, as parents, grew up in. They're getting a lot of great exercise. We have about 350, 400 members of our club. It's expanding all the time. And without the efforts of the City of Jackson and what these folks do, when we've had so much rain coming down, and they're doing their ever-loved best to make sure that we've got a place to practice, they are truly an excellent partner in everything that we do. We could not accomplish this without them. And, Mr. Mayor, as a small token to the City of Jackson, I brought a championship medal that I wanted to present to the City of Jackson. And I wanted to say thank you. Thank you so much. He comes out in all of our tournaments, when we're packing the hotels with competition coming in, and when we were at the state tournament, to get to beat teams like Chattanooga and Memphis and these larger markets in Nashville, and show them what the City of Jackson is all about. I'm proud to say today that we're Jacksonians through and through. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Amy. Thank you all. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, on our next recognition presentation, we're going to hear from the Jackson Arts Council, a big part of our city. Let me call on Melinda Hearn and Steve Riper. They would, Melinda's the director, and Steve, I think, is chair of the board. Y'all come on up. Thank you for being here. Good morning.
Good morning. Appreciate the opportunity to be with you this morning. And on behalf of the Board of the Jackson Arts Council, we are thankful to be here. And if I may, take the liberty to recognize, we have a few of our arts supporters and board members here, and I would like to ask them to stand, please.
Thank you all.
We simply thank you. We simply wanted to thank the board, the council, and all of its members, and the committee for its funding of the Jackson Arts Council. It's grant season now for us, and with that being said, I'll turn it over to our executive director, Melinda Hearn.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to share with you all a little bit about our grant process, our grant season, that we're in the kind of running basis, and we're kind of in the home stretch right now. But we handle two different types of grants through the Jackson Arts Council, so we would just like to extend our appreciation because the impact of your support is not only here in Madison County, which is wonderful, but it's also throughout the Southwest District. The first grant that we handle is called the ABC Grant, and the Tennessee Arts Commission out of Nashville has entrusted us to be a designated agency. So through a competitive grant process, we had seven recipients receiving over $10,000 in grant funding. That was money from the state. So projects such as the Kids Drama Camp in Parsons, with the River Time Players, Russ College Acapella Concert, with the Brownsville Haywood Arts Council, Irish Christmas in America that's coming up here at the NED, we're really excited about that, Community Self-Portraits through CMAC, which is a local art organization, as well as a spring theater production with Jackson Theater Guild. Our new Safe Hope Center will have an art project that we're partnering up with the ABC Grant, and of course, Easter Sales out of Tennessee County was a new applicant this year, as well as Safe Hope Center. So the ripple effects, just not here in Madison County, it's throughout the Southwest District. So the ABC Grant is all about that area. And the recipients totaled seven, and they received over $10,115 in grant funding. Locally, your funding supports our Jack Grant, our Jackson Arts Council Grant, and this year we had seven recipients totaling $12,450 in grant funding, which is amazing. The need is so much greater. There was over $25,000 in the actual applications that totaled up, so the $12,450 is definitely put to great use. Events that you may have attended that you were directly affected by that support was the 36 Annual Starlight Symphony by the, our amazing Jackson Symphony Orchestra, Art for Youth at the Star Center, CMAC, their partnership with the Dream Center, Jackson Theater Guild, and their two productions, the Jackson Coral Society, Jackson Downtown Development's Night at the Ant, as well as Ballet Arts, the Netcracker. So thank you all so much for your support, and we're very appreciative of you all.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Y'all have any questions, any council?
I had a quick question, if I may. First of all, Steve, and is it Melissa? Thank you for the work that you do. We're very appreciative. It makes Jackson even a more richer place to be. Specifically, how much was the CMAC grant that was?
The CMAC was, I believe, I think, over $1,700, I believe.
And that's for the year?
With the Jackson Arts Council Grants, they received support for both of our two grant programs. So the total amount was much more.
Okay, but that's for the year, or is that one time?
Right, it was a fiscal year, June 3rd, July 3rd.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's my question.
Okay, any other questions or comments from council? Steve, Melinda, thank you all very much. Appreciate what you all do for the city.
Appreciate what you all do.
Absolutely. Next, let me call on Mr. Harold Carter, President of the Jackson Tennessee Chapter, NAACP, for a presentation to council.
Good morning, members of the city council, mayor. The issue here is Vision 2020 and the relationship it has for the City of Jackson. As most of you know, we have been through repurposing or refiguration of the school system for the last 20-plus years. We've had six proposals, five or six proposals, that has been affronted to the Jackson-Madison County community. Yet, today's report card is sad because of the fact, I think most of you know, if you keep with, obviously, the dollars that you spend, is that we only have 10%, thereabout, of the graduating classes of our high schools locally that are college or career development ready. That's a serious matter. If we look at our reading comprehension program, it has not been as effective as we had wished. This is not a statement against any one individual or the system itself, because the system itself needs a lot of help. In looking at the alternatives that we perhaps have within the City of Jackson as it relates to education, at once there was city schools, there were county schools. We brought those two together to consolidate not only education, but to be more efficient. That has not quite worked out as well as we had hoped. Now, integrating schools years ago was a great idea, and for a while there, with JCM, when they combined Jackson High School and the Meyer High School, it worked. For some strange reason, we tore it apart, and so now we have a lot of dysfunctions in a lot of our areas. The perception of education in Tennessee and in these United States is very dismal at this point. Yes, there are some bright spots, but as we look at the overall scores of the United States as it goes forward, we're about in the middle of a pack of those three world country, well-developed countries that we find that now are outperforming us in a lot of categories. In Tennessee, we're the lower third of the states in terms of education. In Jackson-Madison County, out of 126 districts, school districts across the state of Tennessee, we're again ranked in the bottom third. We're spending money. I think we're ranked about in the top 10% of the money that we spend per pupil, but the results are not as effective as we would like to see it, and obviously, it has to get better. The new Vision 2020 Plan, it moves facilities, it repurposes facilities. We spend money, millions of dollars, in order to add on, et cetera, in order to save $2.6 million at Jackson Central Mary, for example. That savings should be put back into the classrooms, but at this point in juncture, it is not. I think the other night someone asked for a longer-range repurposing of the money, what it would do, and there was uncertainty on the part of the school board to try to answer those questions. There's still a lot of unanswered questions. The NAACP has went on record saying that we need to slow this process down to really take a real good look, come up with the best ideas from all parts of the community. I'm understanding that some of the board members are saying that we have enough money to do what we need to do, but yet our children are lacking books, they're lacking material, they don't have access to the internet, to all students with computers. We're lacking in certain behavioral, teaching of some of our teachers. It is a struggle. It's not, it just didn't happen during this period of time that the new school board members or the superintendent came on board. But remember, we've been going at this for the last 20, 25 years. We haven't got it right. The primary reason that we hadn't got it right is the fact that we're not treating education as a priority. Education for this community is critical. To educate all children, all children needs the opportunity not only to decide which direction they want to go, but given the opportunity to expand their young minds so they can encapsulate all the things that's good about the quality of being here in Jackson, Tennessee. I ran across Kyle Spurgeon not too long ago, and I asked how job recruiting was going. He said, "We don't do any more job recruiting. We got jobs we can't fill now." When we look at those individuals that are not college-ready, that they're not able to pass a test, they're not able to decipher whether they get a job in order to run the sophisticated machinery now that's required in manufacturing, we have an issue. As a former county commissioner, I can tell you, the critical point of education is to our community when it comes to attracting those types of jobs that pays more, that pays livable wages with good benefits. One of the primary reasons that the mega site has not found occupant is because of our public education system. That's one of the main reasons. In order to get that right, I think the city council needs to explore other ways in order to insert yourself into this conversation, not just supplying money to it. Now, I do understand for years that this city pays more into the education system of Jackson-Madison County than just about any other entity. As we look at the funding sources, we look at the federal government, has to be a part of the equation to funding our local education system. We can't do without federal dollars. As we look at the state money that comes in, we look at the money that the city spends and the small amounts, which ones that the county generally spends. All of these equal to the fact that with the money that we have, if it's not enough, then the question is, what is enough? If we do not have a good system, then what does a good system look like? We're not sure about that. I don't think any of us at this point in time really understand, or at least to the point of where, what is an excellent school system? We need to explore that. Let's stop running around the threadmill, so to speak, and let's get it right. I know that, as mayor, I understood in the paper that we're talking about perhaps infusing some more money into our local jail system. One of the things that I think that we're certainly sensitive to is that, number one, we have too many people that's locked up that don't necessarily need to be locked up. Poverty is a big issue among the African-American community and poor people in this community. Housing costs, the inflationary things in terms of what was required in order to raise a family. A lot of these are good people. They're not deadbeats. They just don't have any other options to themselves. I know that in looking at the Tennessee code annotated, what it takes for the city to get back into the school system is basically an interest from this council, or it takes a citizen petition. One of the things that I would hope that you would think about, and I know that for that petition, the window is small, it has to be done in a hurry, but one of the things that's important is that your voices be heard. If the county is not able to fulfill their obligation of educating all the children, again, it's not necessarily their fault, they're, like everybody, they're trying to figure it out. But we've got other minds on this council. We've got other minds in this city that can help do that. And doing that, we need to explore all options. That includes, and again, if everything is out on the table, to look at the possibilities of going back into the to look at the possibilities of going back into the education business or to insert yourself into the conversation where they seriously take you at your weight and ability in order to help solve the problem. We all like to work together, but when the results are that our children are not educated, that they're not being given the opportunities that they need, yes, they can go to school and they can sit down, but you know, early childhood development, if they don't get to the first grade with some knowledge, then they're always working from behind. That has to be a priority of wrapping those young minds at the earliest possible time. And statistics shows that it works. But if we're not going to do anything, then I think this sends another message to this community that we prioritize the spending of taxpayers' dollars, those critical dollars, into a system that doesn't solve the problem. It only escalates the issues. So, I'm coming here this morning to just to inform you, to inquire as to your abilities or your thoughts as to what stakes do you feel like that you have in it that you could overcome a lot of the inertia that we're having in our education system, not only for this past few years, but what has happened in the last twenty years. Last twenty years, we've been trying to get it right. We're running out of time. These young minds, free or behind bars, don't need to be there in a lot of cases. The jail could be twenty-five, thirty, forty percent emptied right here today if you do something different. We didn't collect the one-point-five million dollars in city tax dollars that was owed to the city court last year. And my understanding, that was just about as much as Davidson County. So, the people are in ability to pay because they can't get jobs. I know there's a lot of other social issues that we have to work on, but the point is, is that unless we seize the moment to educate our children today, because we're losing them every day, unless we seize the moment, then our education system cannot get better. We need your input. We need your support. This community and our children need your decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, President Carter. I think we're all in agreement that the Vision 2020, the plan, has to work. There are no options there. So, we're hopeful that the plan will come forth and we can move forward in public education. Thank you. Let's go to first readings. Item seven, Consideration Ordinance to Amend Municipal Code, Title Seventeen, Refuse and Trash Disposal, Chapter One, Municipal Collection Systems, Section Seventeen dash one-oh-one dash definitions and Section Seventeen dash one-oh-five special requirements. Al?
Morning, Mayor and Council.
Morning.
This is, I guess you would call it somewhat of a housekeeping item. Trying to explain what minor changes we're making here. Recently, while I guess even going further back, in the past, we've had questions, comments, criticisms about the size of the garbage container. Previously, as noted there, it did read having a capacity of not more than thirty-two gallons. So, we're in the process of putting, when we were in the process of putting out a bid proposal for the next five years on garbage hauling, we decided to try and qualify this in a way that would give more flexibility. So, instead of saying a capacity of not more than thirty-two gallons, eliminated it there, we have made it a capacity of more than twenty gallons and less than fifty. So, there's a range there from twenty to fifty and will not weigh more than seventy-five pounds. So, that's the first part of this amendment. The second part is also due to questions, criticisms and comments. And I know this will be hard to police, but we are going on record and saying all garbage must be bagged. Previously, that statement was not in Section Seventy-one-oh-five-one. So, again, these are housekeeping items that we hope will make the trash collection, trash hauling easier and less controversial to all the citizens of Jackson.
Okay, any questions of council? After the questions, we'll go ahead and have a public hearing. But now, questions or comments from council?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Al, I know you said it'd be hard to police about the bagging of the trash, but I mean, what's the plan? Is it up to the guys on the trash route to determine if that's not acceptable? What happens if the trash isn't bagged? They just put it back in the trash can? I mean, that's kind of a broad stroke that we're trying to cover here.
And that's a difficult answer for me to give, but we're going on record. And when people call in and complain that garbage is thrown all over their yards, for example, and try and blame the hauler, then we come back and say, you know, it's noted in our code that garbage has to be bagged. Was it bagged previously? It's gonna be a day-to-day situation on the part of Kathleen Honeycutt and Chris Woods and their staff. I don't think there's one easy answer.
There's not an easy answer and it will be complaint-driven, as many other things are. But we feel like that this-
And everything in your department complaint-driven?
Yes. We feel like that this is a start anyway to be able to cut down on some of the complaints we get in our department. With the size of the garbage can, we want to keep the garbage collection backdoor. And with conversations with our garbage hauler, we did come to a conclusion that we could make it less than, more than twenty, less than fifty in size to be able to keep the garbage cans at the house. Anything larger than that will have to be brought to the curb just because of safety.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Let me ask Kathleen about the garbage bags. Maybe it's the wrong department with respect to Keep Jackson Beautiful. What we used to give out the garbage bags, do we still have that program going on?
We never gave out garbage bags, Councilman. We used to give out leaf bags.
You speak blue bags. You gave them out.
The blue bags were not for garbage. They were for recyclables.
Okay.
And we did give those out for several years with the Blue Bag Recycling Program when we had Metro Waste Management at the landfill. They were able to pull all of those blue bags out, separate the recyclables at that time, and then divide them up however they need to be.
Some people were using them for garbage bags. Is there any type of program that we can have to provide bags for those?
We don't have anything at this point. That might be something that Keep Jackson Beautiful might look into. But the reason we stopped the Blue Bag Recycling Program was because of abuse. People were coming in, they were picking up rolls of bags-
And using for garbage bags.
And using them for garbage. And also, we were finding them in other counties to cover up air conditioners in the winter.
Yeah. Well, with your proposed enforcement of the all garbage may be bagged, it may be a good idea to look at some of those programs and work with Jackson Beautiful that we can have come.
We will try to do that, sir.
I have one follow-up question on the garbage being thrown across the yard. If a complaint comes in that the garbage is thrown across the yard, then our response would be you should have bagged it?
Right. Or the bags need to be in the cans. We always say, now, the garbage needs to be in cans with lids. The weather plays a big part in that. If animals are able to get in the cans, then obviously, it can be thrown at that time.
I have a question if I may. Good morning, Council.
Go ahead.
What's Waste Management's position on that?
On the-
On the bags?
On the bags. They are total agreement with it.
Councilman Congress question. If it's, again, if it's not bagged, what are they gonna do?
I hope that they will let our office know so that we can contact the public, the particular address. We have a very good relationship with our, the drivers with Waste Management and also their people that supervise them so that if we have a problem, we can try to contact the resident.
Okay. My second question is, when is this going to be enforced and when will this start?
I hope, I hope as soon as we pass the ordinance.
Uh-huh.
We're gonna start the, it's gonna be an education process.
Sure. And that was kind of my next piece was, do we plan anything to educate the public to let them know?
Yes.
Is there a grace period or, and that could be something that we consider?
Yes, we have, we have that in the planning stage and definitely after we start a new contract, we are going to have an education process with brochures. I've already made contacts about that.
Okay, I have something that I need to clear up in my mind. When you're talking about bagging garbage or trash, now, does this mean that you can still have those small, those tiny piles of sticks?
Yes.
So, those don't have to be bagged?
And that's not considered garbage. Garbage is-
Some people do though, or boxes.
Right.
Boxes, small.
As long as it fits inside the garbage can, they can pick it up at the back of the house. Any large boxes, any piles of sticks. And in our new contract proposal, we have said that piles that are three by five in size can be picked up at the curb on garbage days.
Is this ordinance a part of a request by our current garbage hauler-
No.
-to be included in their new contract?
No, it is not. It's because we receive so many complaints about loose garbage on the grounds, about garbage cans and garbage being missed at the back of the house because of the size of the cans. People are buying larger cans. And we want to extend that window of space so that more people can get a larger can than thirty-two gallons. But if they insist on getting the ninety-six gallons, you know, they can do that. They just need to bring that to the curb. That will be part of our education process.
Obviously, the effort here is litter reduction as far as bagging.
Yes.
Most definitely. Again, Mr. Chairman and Kathleen, if we revisit that garbage bag, however we done it with Keep Jackson Beautiful, I think it would be a great thing.
Okay, let me, this is ordinance on first reading. Any other questions from council before I open the public hearing?
One quick question if you don't mind.
Yeah.
We're in the process of looking at rebuilding our garbage services. Are we still in the process of doing that?
Yes.
Okay. Is this gonna affect that?
Shouldn't.
Okay. Because I'm assuming their previous bidding was on the old law. Of course, the bagging, I don't think that bothers them, but the size of the cans, I don't know if that would-
The new size and the fact that the bags was in the RFP.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
I have a question for Harvey. Harvey?
Yes.
You were talking about the program for the bags.
Mm-hmm.
Or you're saying a program of bags to the public, just come out and pick up if they need trash bags for trash?
No, revisit the whole thing with respect to health and sanitation, not just bags for trash, but for the recyclables, the whole program that they used to run. I want to revisit the whole program, the entire program.
Our recycling program is a drop-off.
Yeah.
And we have-
But I'm talking about the bags.
Right.
They're still in place, aren't they?
It's still, it is still in place, but and people do not have to have their recyclables in bags when they take it to the drop-off locations. What we did provide was leaf bags in the past.
Okay. But that, to be clear, that's different from providing the public with garbage bags-
That's correct.
As it pertains to this.
Right. And we're not saying people have to buy bags. I mean, people put garbage in Kroger bags and Walmart bags and Bed Bath &amp; Beyond and it's bagged. We just want to eliminate the loose garbage.
Now, I think the program for the recycling is great, but I think when we get into providing bags for garbage for everybody, that's gonna be very costly because people are not gonna buy bags. You know, it's gonna get to the point where I just go to the city and pick up bags. I don't have to buy them. I just wanna help some that probably can't. But when we get to the point where everybody knows that I can just pick up trash bags from the city, that's gonna be a cost effective on us that we need to look at.
And as I said, it doesn't have to be a garbage bag. It can be any kind of bag. Just so it's containerized.
I make a motion to accept it.
Okay, before we vote, let me go ahead and conduct a public hearing. This is ordinance on first reading and a public hearing is mandated. So, let me open the public hearing to see if there's anyone here who would like to speak in support of or in opposition to the passage of this ordinance on first reading. If there is. Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. And I think we have a motion for approval, first reading.
Okay, take these separate.
Well, I guess we can take it any way you want to take it.
Well, it's one item along the agenda.
I'm sorry, what was your question? Can we take them separate?
You're council. I guess you can do anything you want to do, as long as it's from Robert's rules.
There's a motion on the floor.
There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second? We do have a second.
We have a second question on the motion with respect to the Keep Jackson Beautiful campaign. We're gonna, with the baggage, we're gonna look at that again, right?
We can make that part of the motion if council's in approval of that. Okay, any discussion? We have a motion and a second. Counsel, please vote.
The motion passes with six members in favor and two against.
Item eight is second readings. Consideration Ordinance to Rezone Property Located at Twenty-seven Thirty-two North Highland Avenue from RS One Single Family Residential District to O Office District and containing two-point-three-three acres, more or less, committed by Ed Weaver and Dorothy Hall. We will have to have a public hearing on this second reading. So, Stan, why don't you go ahead and explain the ordinance second reading that I'll have a public hearing.
All right. Good morning, Mayor and Council. You have the materials pertinent to this rezoning request. And as you can see on the map that I put on the screen, the front part of this property is already zoned commercially. And the property is split. The part property in the back is not zoned. They are asking to rezone that property and we negotiated with them to come up with a zoning class that would be a step down from the commercial that's along Highland and then step down to office and then to the residential that adjoins it. So, they are asking for O, which is our office-only zoning, and it adjoins office zoning to the north. So, we are recommending it to you and it has been presented to the planning commission. They are recommending it to you.
Okay, we have this on second reading. Let me go ahead and conduct the public hearing after hearing the explanation of the ordinance. And we'll open the public hearing to see if there's anyone here who would like to be heard on this matter, in support of or in opposition to the passage of this ordinance on second reading. Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion. The second, discussion from council. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item two is Consideration Ordinance to Abandon Undeveloped and Unnamed Street Stubb Running East Off of North Highland Avenue, just south of Ramblewood Drive. It's shown on the Country Club Gardens subdivisions made by Ed Weaver and Dorothy Hall.
This is a kind of part of the same request. In looking at this property and looking at the deeds associated with this property, it was determined that there was an old piece of right-of-way that was a part of an old subdivision back in the twenties. And that subdivision has basically been wiped out by most of the subdivisions around it, but there was one small section of this right-of-way that never was developed, so it never went away. And so, to get this taken care of and to keep their property from being split by this unimproved unnamed right-of-way, they are asking to have it abandoned and we are recommending it to you. And the planning commission is recommending it also.
Okay, make sure we do things reasonably correct. The public hearing is not part of this particular ordinance, is it?
This is a public hearing.
That's a public hearing, okay. So, we will have a public hearing on item two. If there's anyone here who would like to be heard on this matter on second reading, speaking in support of or in opposition to the passage of this ordinance, if you'd let it be known. Seeing none, hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. And that's the council for a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
You're welcome. Then, thank you. Item nine, new business. Item nine on new business, consideration City of Jackson's option to exercise the third option on September 22, 2000, city court lease agreement between Sky Mac and the City of Jackson. Obviously, we are leasing the, the building across the street from City Hall, and this will be, this is the last, last five years of that particular lease, okay?
It's the lease, Mayor, originally started January 1st, 2001. Everyone has a copy of the lease package, lease agreement in their package, and then the first option, the extended term was exercised, and maybe that went from 2005 to 2010. The second extended term was exercised, went from 2010 to 2000, through 2015, December 31st, and that's where we're at now. We are recommending a, the last, the third extension, which would be another five years, and it does have a 12% increase. See the numbers accordingly.
Teresa, do you remember the content of that lease, or Al, you may, you may recall? Is there, is there an escape in case, there's been some discussion about relocation of city court, and there's been a discussion for a number of years. Is there any escape clause in there to wear within certain notice? I guess I could read it for myself, but I don't know.
There's a default section, section 13.
That's if they do something wrong, though, and can't correct it.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, sir.
As we relate to the escape clause, is it any possibility we can look at the feasibility of our undeveloped third floor of City Hall?
I think we have a binding lease for five-year period, and, and obviously, you know, at the end of this five-year, hopefully the city will be in a position to, to put its money into, into a building that it either owns or has a, has a deed to. City Court has served us well in its present location, but obviously, I, I think we all pretty much agree that it does not need to be in a retail commercial area of downtown, it needs to be in a more judicial setting, so we'll have some time to work on that during this period, and probably if construction on a, on a new correction facility started today, it'd be over five years before it's finished.
I have a question.
I agree.
I'm sorry. Al, that's a 12% increase over the original, over last year amount.
That's 12% over what we're paying now in the second instance.
Any other questions, council, on this particular lease?
Move the approval.
A second.
We have a motion for approval and a second discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the motion passes with seven members in favor, one voting no.
Item two, under new business, approval of change order one to Gretchen Smith and Partners for the Highland Avenue Roundabout Project.
Roundabout. Okay. Roundabout. We're gonna use ropes and stuff to get around?
Go ahead.
And this addendum addresses three new environmental studies required by TDOT for this project, and they weren't originally included in the contract. And there's an increase in a right-of-way consultant services due to the additional parcels being added to the scope of the project, and the total additional fee is $81,850. The project is funded 80%, federal funds, 20% match with the state, and there's no local funds provided by the City of Jackson. Keith Donaldson is here, and if you've got any questions pertaining to this, he'll be more than happy to answer that.
Move to approval.
We have a motion for approval.
I have a quick question.
A second.
I have a quick question.
Sure, go ahead, council.
Is this the first change on this project?
It is.
Any other questions from council? We have a motion, a second discussion. Council, please.
Who determines, who makes these studies? Who determines? Who determines the company, agency, consultants will do these studies?
Who determines the A and E?
In other words, $81,000 is gonna go to somebody who's gonna do these studies.
Okay.
Why don't we have a roundabout? I think it should be named, you know, huh? Why would we need a roundabout?
Good morning, Council.
Hi, Keith.
We have a consultant, Councilman Foot, at Gretchen Smith and Partners, that is handling the environmental studies, environmental approval, I should say, through TDOT, and it has to meet federal requirements through, that passes down from Federal Highway Administration through TDOT to the city, because they're allowing us to locally manage this project. And so that's why we've hired the consultant, that's why you're voting on this change order, although we're, we're basically just handholding it on behalf of the state, and so whatever requirements Federal Highway would require the state to do, they're pushing down to us to do. And that's why when they came back and said, you need to do a soil test, you need to do an archaeological test, and you need to do as best as test of the buildings, then that pushed down to us. That's the addendum you have this morning.
Okay, so you don't have to bid that out, that's just your-
Right. But they, they, our Gretchen Smith and Partners, our prime consultant, has got subconsultants that they will have to do those detailed studies. That's the, we will get the fees, the additional fees, those subconsultants.
Our very own roundabout consultant.
Our very, very own.
Where is a roundabout?
At the intersection of Highland, North Highland and-
I was talking about where it's one I could see.
London would be a good place to go.
I've got a great drawing in my office, Council.
That sounds like something from Australia.
They do, they do have them in Europe, yes.
There are several in Middle Tennessee as well.
I'm listening, Tony.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any future, any other discussion?
Excuse me, ma'am, I have a, I have a quick question.
Yes.
So, so in essence, the consultant that's needed, that's required for this is not in-house at Gretchen Smith, so they have to-
That's correct. That's, yes, sir, that's correct.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Any other questions, council? We have a motion, a second, right?
Yes, sir.
Council, please vote.
And the motion passes with seven members in favor, one voting no.
Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Item three is donation request from RAP for 80 out-of-contract cell phones from the Jackson Fire Department.
So moved.
Okay, with a motion and a second discussion. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item number four, budget amendments, approved the 2015-16 Governor's Highway Safety Grant. Al.
And actually, the grant is not a budget amendment, so let's do the budget amendment first. It just got looked under there.
All right.
Budget amendment that we have is to move $183,864 into the central dispatch capital budget. This was funds that they had left over at the end of FY15 for their radio project. Didn't know the balance until we completed the audit adjustments, and so they want to move that in with what they currently have this year, which will bring their balance to $410,535.
Move for approval.
A motion.
Second.
A second discussion, council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, second on the agenda is the grant that has been received, the alcohol control measures grant, $29,960.11. This is down from last year, but if you remember last year, that was a large year that we were able to get $99,000 from the state, but this is to help for the overtime for some of the traffic measures that they do on the weekends.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
A motion, second?
Second.
Second. Discussion, council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Item five is consideration of new board appointments, Jackson Municipal Regional Planning Clarence Boone to replace the unexpired term-
Move to approval.
-of Valerie Coe.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion, council, please vote.
Vote is unanimous.
Item number six is consideration of invoices over $10,000.
$10,000.
Come on, Pip.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Discussion, council, please vote.
Vote is unanimous.
I'm invited one tomorrow to the grand opening for the 10th, and next Monday, Christmas. Next month. Check with the weather man, everything you're ready.
Two important announcements. There being no further business meeting is adjourned.
Hey, you couldn't like me, Becker, you saw some blow.
We represent everything.
I mean, thank you, Chance, hey, you get once you do that. If there's something in the water, more than that.